Everybody, welcome tonight. I will call this meeting to order of the City Council being April twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, six oh one P M. Item two, our invocation will be given by Pastor Rabul Garcia of Raspberry United Methodist, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge. I will ask those who are wishing to join us to stand in invocation and ask Pastor Rabul Garcia to come forward and lead us in that invocation.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we approach the throne of grace with confidence that all of us, that every one of us, Lord, can come to you in the name of Jesus Christ, your Son. Lord, we pray that your Holy Spirit will fill this room. As this business takes place today, Lord, in this beautiful day that you have given us, we ask for your guidance. We ask, Lord, that this agenda will be something that you use to bring blessings, abundant blessings, to the city of Odessa, Texas. Heavenly Father, we pray for everyone who makes Odessa Odessa. For everyone, Lord, in this community, Lord, for the leaders of this community. We bless them in your name, acknowledging the task that they have in their hands and the big responsibility. We join in prayer to ask for your blessings, for your protection, for you to continue being the provider of this city. Lord, we place this City Council meeting in your hands, and we ask, Father, for your continuous presence with everyone that makes this community a great place to be. Lord, we pray for our schools, for our teachers, the staff, pray for our first responders. We pray, Lord, for the hospitals, doctors, nurses. We pray for everyone in this room. We pray, Lord, for our community to be people who will honor you and seek you. And God, we just pray above all things that everything, Lord, that we do is pleasing to you, that you put the mind of Christ in all of us, and that you open our eyes to see the wonders that you have in store for us. Father, let this meeting be pleasing to you. Let the thoughts in our minds and the meditation of our hearts be aligned with your will and your purpose. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time, and thank you, Lord, for the opportunity that you have to be present here. And thank you, Lord, for the great opportunity to acknowledge that your presence is in this room and that your presence has no limitation to a religious group, but it is your presence that is everywhere we go, that fills this room and leads these people and these conversations. In the name above all names, the name of Jesus Christ, we come to you. Amen.
Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
So real quickly, I'm going to do a special presentation tonight before we get everything going. I want to invite and ask the council and staff to join me right down in front of the podium, please. And then we're going to hear from Councilman Adore Swann, and she's going to assist in making this special presentation tonight. As everybody comes up here, City Manager, get in front, and then Councilman Swann is going to open this discussion. We are going to make a special presentation tonight, and Councilman Swann, those instrumental in leading the city and directing the staff to, for us to receive what we're about to present.
Thank you. About a year ago, I sat on a regional board that brought to our attention that there were funds available through a national lawsuit with Ken Paxton, Attorney General. And so I arrived forth to the city to ask them to pass a resolution for us to be a part of the lawsuit. It took a little bit of process going through it, and the last day that we could actually file for the lawsuit, we did file. And I think two weeks ago, we got the first announcement that we would get the first check of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which will be the first payment of almost six hundred thousand to go towards the opioid. I know there are several families here, here, that have been affected by this drug, and we want to bring awareness to our community, and we want to help our community. These funds will be set aside in a separate fund, and we will work with the police department chief, Kerkey. He's already expressed some ways and some ideas to be able to use this. And we, as the money comes in, we're going to help educate the public. Those funds can only be utilized in certain places, and education is one of them, to educate our teens. And what's going on right here in Odessa, Texas, y'all don't need me to tell you the statistics. You see them every day on news. So I'm happy to say that the council helped make this happen and took us a year to get the money, but we did get the money.
Before we do the check presentation, I want to turn it over to Councilmember Martha and to bring up and introduce our guest for tonight and bring him up here.
Yes, I'd like to invite Ms. Michelle Watson and her group to come on up. They're with the One Eleven Project, and their main focus is just to bring education and advocacy for this problem we have with fentanyl.
So without further ado, this is the first installment that we're going, the city of Odessa is going to receive in the amount of totaling six hundred thousand dollars. A hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-two and one ninety-one cents is going to, we're going to address it for the battle of opiate, fentanyl in our community. And so I want to be able to congratulate the leadership of the staff, the council, Councilman Swann and Martha for leading this and making this a possibility so we can start addressing the issues. A round of applause for their efforts. Thank you very much. I wanted to have a special bank to make this positive, this large check. But really, what we, what we want to highlight tonight is that we have families here tonight that have been personally affected. And so before, the reason why we operate this, we want them to educate us and why this is important and to tell their stories tonight and why it's important that we could be having this effort and why this is critical for us because of our location, geographical location to the border and what's happening in our backyard. This isn't happening anywhere else. This is happening here. This is home. And this is a priority. And so because of what's going on in the state, we are no longer getting a backseat. So I want you to introduce yourselves, briefly tell the story of your loved one, and then what's just going on. So thank you very much, council. Thank you very much. And then we'll hand over to our parents.
My name's Michelle Watson, and I'm the founder of the One Eleven Project. It started because back in August, twenty twenty, my twenty-year-old son put one bottle of fentanyl in his head. And it was fentanyl, and it killed him instantly. Everyone else was one eleven. Well, my grandmother, who raised me, January, two thousand twenty, she died already. But before that, she always said, oh my gosh, I live in the block, it's one eleven. And so my whole family, all of us, would be like, oh my gosh, it's one eleven. We saw it everywhere. And so, you know, I kind of just tied it all together, but every eleven seconds, someone got to a dead one. The day of my son's funeral, I pretty much said, if I could save one kid, that's all that matters to me, just one. I wasn't able to save him, and so if I can save someone else's, then that's very important to me. And so the One Eleven Project was founded. I've done a couple of presentations in, did Redding County, which is where I grew up and where my son went to school. And then I'm going to go to Redding, Texas next week and do a presentation there. Been trying to say, no, just some middling on all of our local schools because it's much needed. And these kids are selling good stuff in the back, and it's right under, you know, the faculty's nose. And they're dying by the minute. So these are my friends. Unfortunately, we all met because of the same reason. Donna lost her son, Jackson. Murray lost her son, Jarian. And Rebecca lost her daughter, Courtney. This is my friend, Skylar, and I love her. We're just a part of the crew. But yeah, we all met because we've all lost children, and even though we didn't know one another, now it's like we know one another. And we all have the same, the same mindset right now. It's like we have to fight. You know, these kids don't understand teaching one thing. When it comes to schools, it's gummies, it's marijuana. It's, you know, all these little candy little things that are floating through the schools that are, I mean, literally taking these kids out fifteen, you know, well, younger than fifteen. Jarian was fifteen years old, you know, the day before his sixteenth birthday. But some of these kids are like nine, ten, eleven. I have an entire banner full of children who've lost their lives. And so it's very important, and it's something that we really want to start to be there, up here on here. We have a rally. I'll set the courthouse, maybe six, from four to seven P M. You guys all might come. When you think of a rally, you're like, oh, they're chanting, protesting. That's really not what it's about. It is, but it's not. We just want to show, you know, all of our loved ones that have been lost. We have Narcan training. We're going to have speakers like myself, other parents, ex-addicts, people who have battled with things like this before, and people who are also with re-recovery. There are a couple of other organizations, but uphold the association of people with political drugs there. And that's who the head is and the uncle, you know, like that.
The thing is, communication, the comprehension of this community that you realize this is really happening out back there. You know, the thing is, they all come together, and this is a new group and a membership with a very high cost. And one that none of them wants to take. So on behalf of the City Council, our city, our sympathies, our prayers are with you, and we are going to now lock shoes, shoulder up, elbow up. We're going to lock up, and we're going to seriously start addressing education for this community to comprehend the seriousness of what's going on out back there. So once again, on behalf of the city and everyone here, we want to be able to give you a round of applause for your courage, but also we're coming together to educate this, and also we want to encourage you to tell your stories. Our seconded, thank you very much. Believe that it will be a speaking address. Okay, so if you do it just a lot, just be able to take a picture with Councilman Swann out of here so we can continue to start informing and educating our community of why this, of course, visual really helps to be able to start that process. If you got, just pause a minute. If you guys can join us up front back here.
Back front.
Right up this front back here. We're eventually going to get this thing fixed, so we can use the, you guys hold the chair.
Three, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
I used to get around the side.
Thank you very much. We have another presentation. So, okay. Do you join? So usually I always read the proclamation, but I'm going to do a little bit of that. If you end it up, we appreciate presentation, we appreciate the music, we appreciate the food. But tell us what we're doing here, what we're seeing here, and also, I'm sure, what we're doing here as far as our appreciation, what we're seeing.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I want to point out a couple of things because we, this actually coincided with a visit from Scott Jowzlaw from the Texas Hotel Auction Association. Most of the art in Odessa and Ecker County is funded at least in part by hotel occupancy tax. And Scott did a great job of talking about how organizations qualify for hotel occupancy tax. And so what we do here on the last City Council meeting of April is we just come and we tell the City Council, thank you. You support arts and culture and have been for over forty years through not just hotel occupancy tax, but just infrastructure and personnel support that you give to Odessa Arts and to the organizations that we fund in order to promote cultural tourism. And that's a big thing, and a lot of people don't realize that not every community enjoys the relationship between the city and arts and culture that we do. And so what we do is we bring you music, and we bring you flowers, and we bring you art that adorns the community art gallery for the entire year. One of the reasons that we do the art is because these artists will come in here, their families will come in here and see this, and hopefully they stop, they sit down, and they listen to the council meeting. And that hopefully that, that helps us have a more informed constituency, and they become participatory in our municipal government. So art can do just a little bit of that and make people more aware of what's going on at the municipal level than our job is done. So really, what we are doing today is we are saying thank you to the City Council, to the city staff, to the citizens of Odessa for continuing to support arts and culture, which generates six point one million dollars in economic activity every year for the city of Odessa. And so on behalf of not only Odessa Arts, but also all of the organizations that we represent, I just want to say thank you.
The city of Odessa likes proclaim, whereas the Odessa Arts was formed in nineteen seventy-eight, today it is comprised of two hundred members, including nonparting art agencies, local businesses, and individuals. And where its mission is to support and promote the arts of Odessa and add to county throughout cultural tourism, arts and education, arts advocacy. And supported the city of Odessa with our occupancy tax, but this art provides grants for creative sector improvement policy relax, promote cultural tourism. Odessa Art creates hard opportunities for Odessa cultural tourism and throughout, Odessa Check for Festival. Literally death match and the fourth amendment of your place.
Yes, sir.
And so the Odessa Arts manages to do as a public art program, completing nine projects in twenty twenty-two, including the piece of the Odessa Police Training Center, class edition six, class edition nine, and we have it all due on the federal list. Now therefore, I highly hope that the virtue of the Odessa community and mayor of the city of Odessa do hear back for things that arts appreciation month and throughout this city of Odessa, we are all citizens who recognize the importance of art that makes it a laugh in that community and that's a call to rather possibly.
Thank you so much. And now I'm a janitor because I have to move all the time. Other duties as a officer.
Okay, now we go back to the business of the city. Any citizens wanting to comment on the agenda items can do so by coming forward. You have three minutes to make those comments. You fill out a card and state your full name for just for the record. Anyone that's wishing can do so by coming forward. Any member of the public may address the City Council regarding any of the agenda items before or during the consideration of the said item. As we move forward, I'll ask the council to oversee the consent agenda.
Mayor, I believe Councilman Haney has the motion he wants to move before you.
Councilmember Haney, you have the floor.
I would like to table both seven and eight on this. We still haven't got a full rendering done on this yet on how this is going to work, and we're still working out some of the kinks, and I feel like this is not ready for tonight's vote.
Councilman Haney, you're making, you want to make a motion. I haven't recognized a motion yet. You want to make a motion for the tabled item?
Yes, sir.
City Attorney, would it be best that we remove items seven and eight from the consent agenda?
The motion needs to be, Councilman Haney, probably a motion to remove seven and eight from consent agenda.
Yes, sir. So your motion is to remove items seven and eight from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's a motion to remove items seven and eight from consent agenda. Counsel, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye. Okay, once again.
Aye.
All in favor.
You do have a second.
Yes, we do have a second. Councilmember Cornell.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So we do have that on record. It's a motion by Councilmember Haney and a second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have five yays, one no, and one extension. Okay. Now, council, have we reviewed the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda after removing item seven and eight.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of seven and eight. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying aye. Okay, motion passes. The consent agenda is now approved. Now we will discuss item seven. Consider designation in District One B. It's District, Councilman Haney.
I, on this, we were trying to get this to be a fifteen-year deal, and I think that's way too long of a consideration on anything that's here. This is why I'm really stuck on this. I would like this to, if we even consider this, would be a three-year resolution, not a, not a eight-year. Or be really truthful with you, I would even also consider asking that we, by the rules in this and by this consent is maybe to look at bringing them back into the city of Odessa.
Okay, so, okay, so basically, are you saying annexation?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I think they would have to request the annex if I'm, yeah, we can't, we can't do annexation. They would have to request the annex. So we're kind of stuck with an idea.
Okay, so, so Councilman Haney, so when are your, when you, when are the issues? Is it that the proposal right now is for fifteen years for one B and one C?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there, and then you're basically saying is that you want to discuss a three-year?
Yes, sir.
You, is there a reason why, you know, you?
Yes, sir. So this wouldn't be fair to any of the other City Council members of the future or any, anything else here. This is way too long to approve something that we have nothing, we don't know what's going on in the future and stuff. And so we're taking this basically, this agreement basically out of the consent of other City Councilmen that will be following after us to, to study this. By doing this, we're, we're just giving them a green light. We're just giving them a green light, and that's not what we need to be doing on this.
Counsel, does anybody have any discussions on this, on this item?
Yeah, this is, I do, of course. You know, it's just, we've had industrial districts forever. They pay a fee in lieu of property taxes, which is equal to. And the, you know, these are, some of these are down in the old O I D C industrial park, which a lot of you weren't even around, and that started before we had anything down in the south, south part of town. And, you know, if we didn't have that, we wouldn't even have those businesses down there. So, you know, we have never annexed anything that we, that somebody didn't ask to be annexed. And there's a place for industrial districts, and that we need to have the availability to do them. And, you know, if fifteen years is too long, then, you know, I might consider going a shorter time because that is a long time. I don't disagree with you, Mr. Haney, at all. But to, not to do industrial districts is, 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 I think, hamstringing ourselves going forward with getting businesses into Odessa because there are things that fit into industrial districts. And we've got one project going on right now that we're working with O D C on that we're trying to, that we're going to have to create a new one. So if it works that way. So there's just, I don't think you can say we can't have industrial districts or try to annex things. So I might be, you know, amenable to reducing the number of years, but we need these industrial districts. They're important.
Yes, we do.
We're not losing any revenue.
Mr. Thompson, historically, we have done seven years.
Seven?
Seven. Lucky seven. That's what we've done historically.
Okay.
So that's kind of splitting the baby of fifteen, so to speak.
Yeah. And if that's what's been happening in the past, I mean, they're complicated, and every council has to relearn about what they are. And, you know, so it's, I think it's just better if, if they're done on shorter, on, on, you know, longer terms rather than shorter terms. And seven years is fine. I can live with seven years.
I have a rebuttal on this. So these districts, districts were created to put chemical plants and different stuff in that could not be in the city limits. They didn't include beer warehouses. They didn't include just normal ware, warehousing in these districts. It didn't include all of these businesses that don't pay taxes because they're in an industrial district. These districts were created so that solely for different chemicals, stuff that the city could not put in there. And it's gotten out of hand. It's now just whoever wants to create an industrial, we may get a chemical company in here. Who knows? This has become out of hand. This is, you're taking revenue away from the city on somebody just going out here and creating industrial complexes. And here's the thing, only a handful of people are able to do this. Here's a group that just created that they're controlling all the prime property here in Midland, Odessa. There's plenty of other properties to build this on. There's plenty of other stuff. Why aren't we building, why aren't they moving on to those? Why is it always the prime property? So here I have a problem with this on taxes. Are we going to be billing them their taxes? They're going to be billing, they're going to pay for their water. They're going to get hit. What I'm saying is, we just keep riding this out. We just keep creating these zones, and they're just normal businesses going in. These are not what these industrial districts were created for.
Mr. Haney, I think you're misinformed. The fee they pay is in lieu of taxes, which is equivalent to the tax they would pay.
Just like property taxes.
Just like property taxes. So you're mistaken there, and this is not prime property. This property on the south side of town was there since nineteen, I see Mr. Trower in the audience. He could probably help me with the dates because I'm getting old and I forget the dates. But as long as I've been in business in the city of Odessa, which is over forty years, the property we're talking about south of eighty was never prime property. It was just property that we, that we would use for economic development between eighty and I twenty. And so I think you're just misinformed. We think we're not getting paid, and these guys are getting some big advantage, and they're not. They're, they're paying their fees.
Mr. Crowe, will you come up real quick, please? Then when we did the initial presentation, you were, I think, out of town, and we, Mr. Russell made your presentation. Do you want to add to the, to discussion on this?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. I would agree with Mr. Thompson and Mr. Haney on these issues. They're both brought up. So a few things, you know, it's being that our industrial districts do involve economic development to such a high degree. I've been trying to stay up in, in the middle of this a little bit. So a few things, you know, one, we definitely need the industrial districts for sure, as Mr. Thompson pointed out. However, I think that we still need a few changes to the contract that's currently there. One, it needs to be cleaned up. You know, we've got several items. If you've read through it, like we'll have a, a three dot one, and then you come a little further, and we've got Roman numeral three dot one, so it needs to be some cleaning up just in general wording there. But a few of the other things, you know, one free thing, for example, that I noticed in the contract was, it says that, you know, on our payment in lieu of taxes, it would be generated based on a value created by the appraisal district, which is all great to pay property taxes. It'll also be, open them up to now being able to pay impact fees to the city and all of that. But by the way, it reads it's on any offices or warehouse. But by the way, it reads it's on any offices or warehouses. And that's pretty limiting, because we may build a truck wash building there. We may build re, some form of, uh, retail or any other types of buildings there. I think it should be a little clearer and say probably any and all structures that are on the property to make it a little easier for our appraisal district. Another thing that opened, that we did is, uh, the appraisal district had informed me that because it's not inside the city limits and because it's not an actual contract, and they do a payment in lieu of taxes, the appraisal district doesn't have any teeth to enforce this. So we put a little language in here that says that in the event that they do not honor their payment in lieu of taxes, the city can put a lien on the property. However, as it's currently written, that lien would be subordinate to any future lender's, uh, liens, which is highly unusual. I went and did reach out to several bank presidents and credit union presidents. They said, no, normally any municipal liens would be superior or primary to that, to make sure that if the, if the lender had to foreclose on the property, they would have to pay off those city liens in order to, to, of course, take, deal the property. So things like that need to be changed. So just a little bit of cleaning up in the terminology. Now, I do agree with Councilman Haney, and guess this is nothing more than Chris's opinion, has nothing to do with my position, but it's Development Corporation, and that I, I don't think a contract should be longer than about three years, because you guys are stepping on the toes of future council members, and those people will be duly elected by the people in their precincts. We don't know what the future is gonna bring. Uh, if in the future this, that, that city council deems that they want to ask, uh, the, you know, Grow Odessa to, to annex that into the city for whatever reason, they need to have that ability. And a fifteen-year contract, uh, can, can eliminate that. So, you know, shorter-term contracts are, are better, in my opinion, for both sides of this. It gives, it gives both sides wiggle room. So there's a, a few other things, and I, I, I'll send an email to, to Mr. Jones, kind of highlighting that if you guys would like. Um, are there any other questions that I could answer for any of you?
And, and, and Mr. Russell alluded to this a couple of weeks ago, but, you know, let's, let's reinstate that the, the pros and cons of an industrial district. And, and so I, I would have to tend to agree with those, that comp, narrative two weeks ago. Can, can you, you walk us down that?
Absolutely. Industrial districts are very important to the growth and the economic development of the city of Odessa. So there are certain land uses that cannot be approved by the TCEQ inside the city limits. Therefore, we have to have an industrial district, uh, to give us a way to provide, uh, utilities and infrastructure and those type of things to these areas without limiting, uh, the use of that land. You know, like example Mr. Haney brought up was like it may be a chemical company. Well, the TCEQ's not gonna allow a chemical company inside the city limits, so we need an industrial district for that. There, there's just a multitude of reasons that that's good. But at the same time, we want to level the playing field for all the other developers and builders in the city as well. You know, if they're gonna be subject to ad valum taxes and property taxes, they're gonna be subject to impact fees. You know, we don't want to necessarily give the, the industrial districts this big, huge leg up over other developers just because that wouldn't be fair. So this seems to me like kind of the best of both worlds to keep that as a level playing field.
And I think I probably agree with that last statement you made, Chris, is, is that, is that when the original industrial districts were created, it was a level playing field.
Yes, sir.
So you make a good point about that, because I haven't, I haven't read the legal documents, okay? I'm not a lawyer. That's my lawyer.
Yes, sir.
So Dan, if they need to be cleaned up, my suggestion is we clean, I, I had mentioned, I can go with a shorter timeframe. I know when I was on the hospital district, we didn't sell, we didn't do anything more than a three-year contract, just because, for the very reasons he, he stated.
Flexibility.
Yeah, flexibility. You don't, you don't want to have to remake the wheel every three years, but it, I think, once you clean it up, if that's what needs to happen.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion, three years?
Well, I can.
What do you like?
One, one of the other suggestions I had was, you know, even down on the signatures, you know, we specifically list Grow Odessa President Gus Ortega. My rec, you know, it should be better just to list, you know, Grow Odessa President, because if you put a name in there every time that changes, you're gonna be looking at this contract again for updates. You know, just a few things to kind of clean them up a little bit, but that would be the reason to table that now is to give legal a little bit of time to, let's just really cross our Ts and dot our Is and make sure this is exactly what council wants.
I have a, I have a question on that contract, since we're talking about the contract and he's gonna clean it up. So the entities are Grow Odessa and the City of Odessa, but then also the Chamber of Commerce is, um, notified. They don't sign the contract or do anything with the contract, so as a third, I'm just asking a question. Why is the chamber part of these contracts?
You know, that's.
I think that's a good question.
That's where it's always been.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's always, the way it's always been.
Well, this is just in the notification part. They're not signing as a signer of the contract.
And they're really.
Notification for any changes would be notified to the City of Attorney of Odessa, the President of Grow Odessa, and then it says, and.
Yeah.
The Chamber of Commerce. I think it's a valid question.
So again, this is where we're back at, is they have an unfair advantage on other developers, because now they have a chamber which is backing them. This is.
I, I would say.
Why is the chamber not backing the other developers? But they're gonna back these guys. And so that's where my question is coming in on this. We have so many different things of the, that the city is doing. The city's taking all of the, the risk, taking all of the, everything to these, these guys. Now we got a Chamber of Commerce that's supporting them. We're right back to where we're at. Why does the chamber not support anybody else?
Okay, back, back to history again. The, the, the chamber was involved because OIDC was not a public entity.
Right.
ODC was, Mr. Trower and I were stockholding members of ODC. And the only other entity that we had at the time was the chamber. And the chamber did economic development. That was our economic development. So we did it in conjunction with the chamber. So this is some history that, that you may not know, uh, but I think that, uh, I think where I am right now, I don't mind, I don't mind Dan cleaning up the language.
Okay.
Welcome to shorten the years. But once again, industrial districts do not have any advantage over any other business inside the city.
Okay, so.
So that's just.
Let me wrap this up, so.
With these changes, I would agree.
So the thing is, what I, I would encourage, uh, you know, start cleaning up the language.
Okay, we'll do that.
If anyone in members' council wants to add and discuss anything with, uh, the city manager, the city, uh, city attorney, the CA.
Call me.
I'm just gonna say the CA. And so, uh, I would encourage for, uh, to have those discussions.
I'll make a formal motion for the three years. We need that in the contract.
Yeah.
We need that.
I need, I need.
So, okay, so we'll hold, hold on before I recognize that, Bob. So the thing is, is that before we take action, are we gonna, are you making motion into make that amendment and put that in for a three-year contract?
And all of.
But here's the thing, are we, what are we doing in the contract? Are we sending it back? Are we tabling the action?
No, no, you're, what we're gonna do is, uh, everything that Crowe has said, I want that included in the motion as well, and then we'll get it cleaned up.
Okay, and then bring it back.
And bring it back two weeks from now, Lord willing.
That's, that's what I was, that was my next, I was gonna ask, can we have this done and ready for the next meeting? So we can.
It's been going on.
We've been going on.
Yeah.
I think you made a valid question, which is, do we need to send this back to Grow Odessa for them to look at before you guys?
I would probably say they do need to look at it.
Yes, because we think we need to, we got three parties involved. We got the city, Grow Odessa, uh, who else?
Uh, well, the chamber. I mean, they're not really on the contract, per se.
They're not on the contract.
But I mean, but Grow Odessa's.
The Grow Odessa, Grow Odessa and, and the City of Odessa, and the City of Odessa.
And the reason Grow Odessa needs to be on there is because they own that property.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is OIDC.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what I kept saying, that, that, they're a player in here.
I think it's hurting that they get to look at the contract.
They, they, surely. And, and we can.
I would make that termino, I'm sorry, terminology matches as well, Mr. Attorney, which is I would list OIDC doing business as Grow Odessa, so it's official.
You have to clarify.
That way it's all, just, just another cleaning up thing.
Yeah, just change names.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, um, before this gets real muddy, uh, so we, uh, council member, so we're not tabling this item?
No, we're, what we're gonna do is, is the motion that she's gonna make is gonna include three years and.
Clean up the contract.
Clean up the contract.
Change it to all structures.
Right. And municipal lien will be superior, and then we're gonna work on the name change.
Councilman Haney, is, does that suffice? Or is there anything else you want to add, or you want to have more discussions with, uh, our CA?
I'm good. But yeah, the way it was, it just could not go through. This was not complete. This was, sorry, I don't want to use the terminology, but it was half-done.
And we can do that.
Definitely, definitely, you know, I, I'm glad you brought it forward, you know, for a discussion. And so this is what we're doing. So, um, counsel, uh, councilman Swan, if you want to go ahead and make the motion.
So I'll make a motion for the three years that we need to clean up the contract. We need to put all structures and the municipal lien superior. And we need to make sure that we change, uh, take, uh, instead of having the name, just leave the name blank. And it says the title of president, get rid of the name.
Just the title of ODS, OIDC.
Okay, so when you want, when you want, uh, we do the presentation, go, uh, where it existed and what's redlined, so we can see the changes.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that, yeah.
That way we can see it.
Yeah.
Item by item, paragraph by paragraph.
We can do that.
Okay, so that's the form of the motion, counsel, any further discussion?
Second, I'll say second.
Second by Councilman Thompson, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now, mayor, on number eight, we're gonna do the same thing.
So now we're gonna consider, uh, item eight.
Do the sound, please.
Which is District One C. Counsel, any discussion? We, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we do the same thing on this one, that we have a three-year contract, that we clean up the contract. It changes to all structures, the municipal lien superior, and make sure that we take the name off of the signatures and that it says the OIDC in place, or.
DBA.
DBA Grow Odessa.
Yeah.
I have a.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Swan, second by Council, Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes, you're answered. All right, now that we've gone through that confusion, we're gonna go on to regular. Oh, we only have the consent agenda. That was just a consent agenda, so nobody's gonna be talking to you today. So we're gonna move on to, uh.
You got eight minutes.
So item ten. Right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, this is, I have, I've never seen regular on you. That kind of threw me off.
No.
No, that's consent agenda, isn't it?
Oh, no. That sounded like a consent agenda.
So it's regular, the regular threw me off. So now we're on to regular, item ten, consider approvals and accept the state of Texas Grant Fund via SBB, Emergency Medical Services. Mr. Chavez, oh, now, Mr. Vice, Richie, how you doing, sir? Always good to see you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, mayor, counsel. Uh, my name is Cody Ritchie. I'm presenting for Chief Chavez this evening. So what this is, Senate Bill Eight, it's a, uh, program that gives, uh, organizations money to send these paramedic students through school, EMT students through school. Uh, so what Chief Chavez is asking is to create, uh, two fiscal year twenty-three J-Right grants. And, uh, using those, we will accept a total of seventy-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to send nine of our paramedic students through training for the twenty-twenty-three spring session.
How many students?
Uh, nine.
Nine.
All right.
Free money.
Yes. Counsel, any discussion?
Freeman, we like Freeman.
Oh, we, well, we're painted in, in the long room, but.
Yeah.
At, at least it comes back to me. Counsel, any discussion?
We approve.
Entertaining motion for approval. I have a, uh, motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve item ten. Second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes, you're answered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We're gonna move on to item eleven, consider the rejection proposal for forensic audit services. Uh, Ms. Samanegru.
Should I ask Dan to take this?
Yeah. Are we gonna go through that material?
No, no, sir. This is just to reject the bids. We had so many questions on it that we need to redo the scope of work and reissue it out.
Okay. When will be the reissue?
Uh, hopefully in a couple of weeks.
A couple of weeks.
Not next week.
Yeah, 'cause you gotta have another presentation by the ninth, right?
I know it, see?
Okay. And then it will run for?
It'll run for.
Thirty days?
Three weeks, I think that's what we had it.
All right, two weeks. Counsel, any discussion on item eleven? We have a considered rejection for proposal for forensic audit services. Any discussion?
So the questions came from the vendors, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yes. And so, um, so recommendation is to reject them so we can get back and get these questions answered.
And change the bid specs to be more clarification on what we're looking for.
So, um, okay, any, uh, any discussion?
I have a question. Are we just doing it state of Texas, national? Are you sending it out to the, or have we talked about that?
That's a good question.
Good question. We talked about sending it national.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
So we're gonna cast a wider net.
Yes.
All right.
More questions, too.
More question. It will, it will lead to more questions.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Uh, counsel, any further questions? Any other further discussion? Entertaining motion for, uh, item eleven to, uh, reject a proposal for forensic audit. So moved. I have a motion by Councilmember Mata.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Six, two, oh, zero. Mr. Vasquez, excuse himself. Item twelve, to discuss and consider action to approve the Performance Services PSI as an energy service provider and allows interim city manager to contact and perform services following Texas Local Government Code three oh two point zero zero one. Uh, Mr. Benau.
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor. You should have received within your packets some, uh, financial documents out, outlining some of the things that we're allowed to do under these, uh, this performance services. And, um, and allow us to move forward with, uh, what it says contract, but it's just permission.
Yeah, it's, it's a memorandum of understanding. It allows us to put boots on the ground. It kind of kicks in our insurance, so we're gonna have some third-party testing some things. And so we, before we can do that, we need to have something in writing, uh, contract is just a word in general.
And at this point, that still means there is no commitment.
I think that's what the council wanted to hear at this point. And, uh, counsel, do we have any discussions, questions?
Yeah, I do. Uh, are there any fees with that?
No, for you guys, there will be.
Okay, thank you.
Any further, uh, discussions? Counsel, we have item twelve, of course, to discuss, consider, uh, discuss and consider action to approve Performance Services Incorporated. And I will ask if the council is, has a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve item twelve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vasquez. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes, you're answered.
Thank you.
Mr. Benau, uh, when would the contracts be executed? And the memorandum standing? I'm sorry, I let you take off before.
So, uh, the attorney already has it. Um, whenever you guys get to signing it, it will start, and then we'll be out here to start testing and get you guys more answers.
Okay.[1652.41] Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item thirteen, consider appointment and contract approval for city attorney, consider appointments, uh, and the city attorney contract for Mr. Jones. Council, do we have a discussion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we hire Dan Jones as our city attorney and that we approve his city contract.
I second.
Council, do we have any discussion, further discussion on this item? Any questions?
Uh, do we need to open it up for public opinion, public expression?
Well, I mean, the public can, uh.
I would enjoy, if someone would come and cuss me tonight, I would enjoy that. Let them come and cuss me while they can.
Trust me, you won't have to wait long for that to happen.
I know.
They'll report if we did it right or wrong, so.
I have a bullseye throwing you back. I have a bullseye throwing you back.
We have item thirteen, so we have a motion by Councilmember Swanner to, uh, appoint and contract approval of the city attorney, uh, and pick up his, uh, city, uh, city contract. We have a second by Councilmember Cornell.
Mm-hmm, I do.
So all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. Congratulations, sir, and we'll be praying for you.
I need all the prayers I can get, Mayor.
Uh, we're gonna move on to item fourteen, resolution, consider approving the engagement letter from Jeffrey L. Moore to provide legal services to the Odessa Development Corporation. Mr. Crowe.
I'll talk fast. Honorable Mayor, distinguished council, thank you again for your time. Uh, coming for you tonight for the Odessa Development Corporation, uh, unanimously, as a board, has voted to, uh, recommend for ordinance, uh, securing the services of Jeffrey L. Moore with the firm of Brown and Hoffmeister out of Richardson, Texas, on an ad hoc case-by-case needed basis, uh, they are a legal firm that specializes and has decades of experience in, uh, not only economic development, but also municipal matters. Not to step on the toes of our wonderful, congratulations, city attorney, but, uh, they just provide a little step deeper into economic development, uh, as far as, uh, helping us develop future contracts, uh, that'll probably lean a little more protection to the city, as well as, uh, we've had several questions come up as far as, you know, what can economic development fund, what can they not fund, and with their expertise, I think they can, uh, help lend a lot of credence to that. Um, we did, uh, send this out, we talked to two other, uh, law firms and attorneys in addition to Mr. Moore. Uh, we had a special legal committee put together, um, of several members of the ODC that, that did review, talked to all the separate attorneys, looked at billing and compensation, uh, Mr. Moore's agreed to bill us on a per hour basis, which is very, very nice. Um, so unless we use him, we don't pay anything, we only pay for exactly what we need, um, which is fantastic. So we're just asking for city council's approval, uh, for resolution, I can tell Mr. Jones is about to.
And, and Council, even before this was presented to ODC, I called Jeff Moore and I talked to him, and, and I think he's gonna be a wonderful help. Uh, he is, he's an expert in type A and type B, and, uh, I think that this will be very helpful to us in the upcoming year.
Council, any discussion?
One question, Mr. Crowe. I just have one problem with the contract, cuz you're always reading contracts, so.
Please.
Just want you to know I read yours too.
Good.
Just teasing. Uh, the only problem I have is that we under, in, under nature and scope of representation, you have, we understand that our relationship is to represent, provide legal counsel as attorney for ODC. I've got a problem with that. This council is ultimately responsible for your actions, not.
You're correct, yeah.
So I would just like to include the city attorney.
Yeah.
To, to work in conjunction with the city attorney, so one, he knows when you're talking to Mr. Moore, and so they can keep on the same, same page, does that make, make any sense?
I don't think that would be.
Because ultimately, the city's responsible for that.
A problem, but, and I'll, I'll default to Mr. Jones on this, but I would suggest you not do that on the contract. Reason is, is anything that, that the ODC approves, even on recommendation of that attorney, it then has to go to city legal.
Yeah.
For them to go through and make sure that you guys are protected, and that just puts a little degree of separation in there between the City of Odessa and the ODC.
But there's not really any separation, I mean, it's.
It's, it's all on paper, and, and I will default, if you think it's best, by all means, uh, I, I would be, I would be more than happy to do that.
I can do that.
To me, on the offset, you know, I would have them represent ODC specifically, have the City of Odessa represent the city, just in case. Anything working.
And that's why I'm saying, I just wanna have collaboration.
Absolutely, we agree with that.
I think the designation as attorney for ODC potentially could end up in conflict.
I, I have no problem doing, saying the ODC and City of Odessa, so.
I think it's a great idea, we hire outside counsel all the time for specialty, you know that.
Yes, sir.
Specialty items, and this is a specialty item, and I think this is a really a good move, so.
Do you see any problem with that, Mr. Jones?
No.
Okay, I'm all for it, that sounds fantastic, so, but we'll, we'll ask, can we make that correction, send it back to them? I, I, I can't see why they would have a problem with it.
We can make it, I'll talk to Jeff tomorrow morning, I would much rather just have my nose in it, just for y'all, because my Lord lies with you seven, with all you seven. So, you know what I'm saying? I just wanna make sure that y'all are protected, period.
And not just for this year, but five years, ten years.
Yeah, on down the road, yes, sir. On down.
So we need to, uh, do we, uh, wanna make a motion to include the language?
I would, I would, I would, well, I would make a motion to include the language, I'll call Jeff tomorrow and get him to change it, and I'm sure there'll be no problem with Jeff.
Okay, Council, so the thing is, is that there is a recommendation to add, uh, the city attorney to the language of the contract.
Right.
Is from Brown and.
And do you, do you want the city attorney or City of Odessa, so that the firm represents Odessa Development Corporation and the City of Odessa?
And the City of Odessa, yes.
Yeah, isn't that pigeonholed it?
Just, just making sure.
Yeah, the City of Odessa.
But we're on the same page. Yeah, that, that's what we want.
So.
That's exactly right, thank you, Chris.
Can someone make the motion?
I saw a move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve item fourteen, add the language to the City of Odessa. And I have a second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Chris. Move on to miscellaneous, to consider appointment of Municipal Court Security Committee, uh, so.
Mayor, you want me to?
Yes, so I, I, before I open it up for discussion, uh, I was going to direct, uh, our city attorney to lead us in this discussion.
So, Mayor and Council, what we have, um, it, on the afternoon of, let's see, it looks like Mr. Bernard sent an email last Wednesday, the nineteenth, and basically, he was wanting to know about the minutes of the Municipal Court Security Committee. And we understand that from Mr. Bernard's email that they had met twice, and so as a s.
Before you go forward, let me ask this question.
Okay.
What is the committee, what are we talking about?
Okay, so the Municipal Court Security Committee is headed by the presiding judge. Uh, and what it does is provide security plans, of course, we can't release security plans or anything like that fro, from municipal court.
Security on premise.
On the premises for municipal court building. So that would include not only Mr. Bernard's, uh, two administrative assistants over there that work for the judges, but it would include the judges, it would include the director of municipal court, it would also include all the employees, it'd also include, uh, the prosecutor's office as well, and teen court. So that would be the security area that they would try to be, make sure everyone's safe.
And there's a committee that meets.
Yes, there's.
To discuss.
There, there is a committee that meets, uh, one of my prosecutors, Kevin McThethan's on it, and the, the other members of the committee are, um, of course, Judge Rodriguez, Judge Kidd, uh, Kimberley, and I dare not say her last name, the Director of Municipal, um, Court, and then I think there's Jason Ball, who's an OPD officer. So those five are on there. So, Mr., uh, Judge Rodriguez had basically replied to, um, Mr. Bernard and said that, that he was told by Mr. Gomez, uh, who Hector Gomez, a former US Marshal, who heads Texas's, um, court security. When I say court security, I'm talking about Texas Supreme Court, Court of Appeals, all the way down through district courts, county courts, justice courts, on down in municipal courts, Hector Gomez, former US Marshal. So anyway, um, so, uh, Judge Rodriguez basically said that he could not turn this information over to him, to the city manager, or to the council. And which, when I was told this, it kinda concerned me because how are y'all gonna provide funding for the Municipal Court Security Committee if you don't know about the plans? See what I'm saying? How are you gonna find a bailiff, how are you gonna, how are you gonna fund this, how are you gonna pay for this? And so I reached out to Mr. Gomez, and he was quite frank with me, and, and, and I, I will read you what he sent me back. He, and of course, he returns my email, he says, I advise that he could, could provide to city council and management.
Who's he?
Uh, Mr., he is a Judge Rodriguez. Um, so my concern is was the city should be that security-related assessments, policies, deliberations not find its way to the public forum. It is even my recommendation, again, this is from Hector Gomez, that city management and a member of the city council be part of the Municipal Court Security Committee. I hope this clarifies. So the point of it is, is that Judge Rodriguez has not included any of you, our city management, on this, which he needs to. He was told to by Mr. Gomez, again, former US Marshal, and he handles all of this for the state of Texas. From the Court, from the Court of Criminal Appeals, Court of Appeals, Texas Supreme Court, District Court, Justice Courts, municipal courts, he is over it for all of the state of Texas. And so his advice is for one of you to be on that committee.
Including the city manager.
Including the interim city manager. And the reason why that, the reason why that is, is because there's gonna come a time when they're gonna come to you and they're gonna say, okay, we need twenty thousand dollars to hire, uh, two guys that look like BA Baracas, or Mr. T. You know what I'm saying, to scare everybody away. So, I, and I make that as a joke, but the truth is, it's very important. Of course, you're not gonna come out here, you're not gonna be able to give it to the OA, you're not gonna be able to give it to the head, Odessa headlines or anybody, because that information stays with you. You are a capsule, you take that security and you, that security plan, you hold on to it, okay? So that's why this is on here tonight. One of you needs to be voluntold, for lack of a better word, to be on there, and then we can let, then Mr. Bernard can let Judge Rodriguez know who's been voluntold, and, and y'all can go from there. Because eventually, y'all are gonna have to pay for this. And somebody needs to, y'all, y'all are the ones with the purse strings, not him.
Well, I'd make a motion with, uh, interim, well, the city manager for now, the interim city manager, I think he needs to know that.
Okay.
Cuz he has people that work under him, and then, and then I'd nominate Mr. Cornell to.
I agree.
Be the city council.
Is that a second? I got him down here fighting over seconds, over that, Mayor.
So we have a motion.
Sorry about that.
To add to the municipal security team, interim city manager, uh, Gaby Bernard, and Council Representative, uh, District, uh, Four.
One, two, three.
One, two, three, four. Uh, so, uh, Councilmember, uh, Greg Cornell, District Four, to the Municipal Court Security Committee. I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swanner, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to item sixteen, appointment of boards, Secretary Grimaldo, you have the floor.
Mayor, Council, for the Downtown Odessa Board, appoint Craig, Craig Stoker. That's the only appointee for today.
That's my, that's my appoint line, Lawrence.
We have a motion to appoint, uh, Downtown Odessa Craig Stoker, uh, second.
So move.
Second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Before we take that vote, can we?
We have, we have, you want a discussion?
Yes, uh, we're not, not on that appointment.
A discussion or interrogation?
No, not on that appointment, the appointment's good, but I did get a, a text, I don't know if it has to be on the next agenda, or, or we're getting put on this, um, by, um.
Next agenda.
Next one, I already asked her.
Never mind.
I did too.
Then just move forward then.
So, Ms. Grimaldo, did, did you check out what I asked you to check out?
Yes, and it will be placed on the next agenda.
Okay.
The May ninth meeting.
So we wind up having a motion to appoint Craig Stoper, Stoker, Stoker, uh, for Downtown Odessa Inc. I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, I have a second by Councilmember Vasquez, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay, motion passed unanimously. Seeing that there is no more, uh, business for the city council, I will entertain a motion for adjournment by Councilmember Swanner.
Second.
And second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. So motion passed unanimously, we are adjourned, be safe going home.